Good evening. This is the meeting of the Board of Education of the Town of Scarborough. It's January 22nd, 2015. Could we please have attendance?
Mrs. Beely?
Here.
Mr. Gado?
Here.
Mrs. Bling?
Here.
Mrs. Gassengill?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mrs. Cherry? Mrs. Murray?
Mrs. Hartle.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, my nation, my God, can be visible with a reason and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to ...?
There are some adjustments. If you look at items, Agenda Item 7 and 8, they are both executive sessions. Just to ensure that we're sensitive to people's times, there is, I want to change the order of 7 and 8 so that we're discussing the personnel matters first and then followed by the motion to discuss the bargaining contract. So now, after Item 7, Personality Matters, the Board will briefly return to public session, but only to move into executive session for the new Item 8, which is the bargaining contract discussion. That would be an adjustment.
Okay. Our new business. We have policies.
All right, yes, since January 8th. Do you have a motion?
Sure.
Again.
Any discussion, any corrections, anyone noticed? Very good, all on paper.
You weren't here for the meeting, okay. Very good.
First reading of Policy AD, Educational Philosophy Mission.
So, a lot of these, this is the last meeting, there were not, we didn't make any changes to review them. We're just trying to go through to make sure that they're all up to date and some of them had not been updated on websites since the website had changed over, so we just were doing a really thorough check all the way through. So, AD is Educational Philosophy Mission, and that was virtually unchanged. Do you want to do all at once or one by one? Do you need to do one by one?
Yeah, could you have a close preview so that if anything you want to add to it?
Okay, so, do you want to vote on them individually? Yeah.
I've got two questions, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll do it one by one.
That's fine.
Okay. So anyway, AD was just a review, so there's no change. So, approval, what you presented?
Do we need to vote on that? It hasn't changed?
It's a first reading, so...
No, we're not changing it, it's already on there.
That was a question we had for...
Changing the revision, the revision, so it shows that it's been adjusted.
Does it be a second reading or just a review? Not with the question of that? If it's a review or not?
Possibly in a formal sense, but you're really not substantively changing anything. In some ways, it's like an insignificant or not substantial change. You can probably, I mean, you can just update the date of review that the committee has reviewed it. The Board knows about it, they've reviewed it. It can be done, be all I think.
So, first reading only for the ones that we just reviewed?
First and second reading together, basically.
And then I would put them there for first and second reading.
Second discussion, discussion, so.
We call them this, all the things? Do you have anything for the book?
Yeah, I think I want to say that, you know, I hope the public read this stuff. This is something that binds our work, and if you read them, you will understand what life you do, a lot of things you do, like putting students first. So I thought, you know, everybody, actually, the public, to come, to go through this, and I think it would be very helpful if you, you know, know what I'm doing and understand what I'm doing. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All on paper. Six.
Okay, so ADA is the same thing with just review, so I present that for our first and second meeting.
Who will present it?
That was School Department Goals and Objectives.
Yeah, just to comment, we're no longer doing the 18-month improvement, right? Isn't that time extended out now? So it's beyond 18 months? We may want to, maybe make note of that or correct that. I don't have a problem with it, I just, it states that it's 18 months, so I don't know if we want to keep it that way. We just want to say community involvement or make it more...
Do you break them very much?
Yeah.
Or you could say probably an 18 to 24-month improvement type of cycle, because it's not likely to get any shorter or any longer than that, right? So, I might just cover it.
So we could just add the 24 to that one, and then we can bring that one back for...
Again, it's not a...
Not necessary.
It's not a substantive change.
Okay, so, all on paper. Six.
And EDA, Board Standing Committees. This one does have some changes, so I think everybody probably had a chance to review it, it was enough to pack it. There were some standing committees that were removed from the policy, and the idea when we were sitting down to talk about this one was that there are a lot of things in policy that would be better suited to school board member playbook, and we currently don't have some of these made on, so we thought those would be as needed, so that's why we added the 8.0, other committee assignments would be assigned.
Any questions?
Yeah. The capital improvements, was that long-range planning or was that a different item, a different issue? Capital improvements maybe?
As far as I know, that was different.
That was different.
I don't know how or why, but I don't, it was for CIP. So it wasn't really a long-range planning, it was, they were doing the CIP.
And my question is, are we now, are we now doing the CIP budget along with the regular budget? Is that correct?
Right, and so it's overseen by the finance, by the finance committees?
Correct. And the function of the CIP committee was to review, I served on it, it was to review the technology submissions for CIP and the maintenance, what do I say? Whatever maintenance projects that Todd had, and those items are now part of the general review of the total budget. So that would be the rationale, in my opinion, why it's being removed as a standing committee.
It just makes sense to streamline it, but all stays with finance, so that it's a bigger picture.
Okay. Do we have a curriculum liaison?
We also discussed that.
Right.
I think the feeling was that as long as we, you know, were hearing from the School Department in terms of curriculum, what direction they were going into, we wanted to be, didn't we put a sentence in at the very end saying we wanted to be able to...
It was just, says, shall be informed by the Director of Curriculum for the final review and selection in the draft book. And instruction of materials, including technology, for recommendation to the Board as a whole. But I think you were the curriculum liaison last...
Were you reading Chris too?
I did some of that.
Yeah. Yeah, with ELA you did.
Writing programs.
That was two, three years ago. So that's 7.6, curriculum liaison, did you see that?
So there wasn't any additional text added?
No, no, that was already there. So, but we thought that one would be as necessary, but it's no harm because it shall be informed, it's not a committee, it's just...
And at one point, there was a full-fledged curriculum committee made up of board members, administrators, and teachers, and parents.
Yeah, my concern is just, I want to reference somebody that doesn't exist. It's not going to be there, and it's not going to be functionally utilized. I don't want somebody outside reading that thinking, there's a curriculum liaison, I want to talk to that person, and it's not really a function.
I think that's under, more of the committee assignments, because that was something that came up.
That has changed to an LA time assignment.
Yeah, and I was also going to suggest maybe 8.0, other committee assignments. I wasn't sure, because it's under the Standing Committee section, or it was right after, whether that was an ad hoc, or maybe adding just ad hoc or something that gives us a little more flexibility, because it sounds, reading that, it almost sounded like, we're going to create new committees whenever we feel like it.
Oh, okay.
You see what I mean?
That was the intent.
I didn't, I didn't think it was.
Was there more assignments, maybe you'd say? Because that's like when we needed to have something...
Like intercardy or something, or...
I mean, I would just think adding ad hoc, or some reference to that as a temporary assignment or something might just, I'm trying to read this from outside of the group, to, if I read this, what does this really mean?
Jackie, did you want?
Yes, I do. I think it should be there, because it is, one of the responsibilities of the Board is to approve curriculum, and I think that there should always be a representative from the Board anytime curriculum is, new curriculum is being discussed, and whether it's in the technology field, or textbook field, or whatever it happens to be, I think that that, as stated, should continue and be acted.
I think everyone agrees that that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not a particular person, so it's not like every month when you come around, on the first Thursday of the month, and you go down your committee assignments. You're not, you know, so...
Because it only comes up when there's a curriculum change, so I think it is a little great that it moves around, like Christine, like when you did the LA, you talked to other ones, and so I think it, as things come up, you kind of just look at, see who's got some time in for it.
I think we can either move it to the responsibility, another responsibility area of the administration or something to inform the Board, or, or what we could do is just say, add a curriculum liaison at the discretion of the Chair or something, or a temporary one, or per debate, or whatever, however we word it, so it doesn't look, or as needed, correct?
It's not a permanence, you know?
So it's as needed on that one?
And just to provide an explanation, it was very common in the school districts, but this was years ago, that they would go in a five-content-area cycle, and they would do science one year, English language one, arts the next, and this, that, and the other, and then come back and cycle again. And at that point, that was, I mean, it was, I don't know, I suppose it was efficient, or it was just the way to do it. And we have, we have found that, you know, we are so informed by data to look at where curriculum needs to be adjusted, and Monique, I think, has done a fabulous job of certainly included, including our teachers in evaluating all of the curriculum, and I know that both of the two of you have been involved in certain curriculum selections. It's a very thoughtful process. I think it should stay in there. It is really more an ad hoc committee assignment when, when, when Monique and the, and the teachers are at a certain point of really looking closely at materials and making a curriculum decision. As Jackie said, it is part of, you know, the Board determines the program of studies, essentially, in the, in the district, so there would be a curriculum connection, and again, I think it's working well the way that it's working, we appreciate the input, and, and, but Chris's point is that it does move on to an eight, so it moves beyond kind of standing committee assignments, whatever it was called here, standing committees. And I think that, you know, it could really be more a 7.8, eight, which would say, other ad hoc committee assignments will be made as needed. And then I think you're, get rid of that confusion of the formatting piece, and in some ways, it also covers the fact that things like curriculum are moving to much more ad hoc assignments rather than written assignments.
So move that curriculum liaison to 7.7, to make that an eight?
No, I just leave that, I mean, I would leave it, and then 7.7, then 7.8 could be, other committee assignments will, other ad hoc committee assignments will be made as is necessary.
Okay. Got that all on paper. Six. Student presentation. What's Policy EEA?
I'm touching that. This one was, this was stay the same. This was just a review.
Did we add, we add some text?
Wait, wait a minute. EEA. Oh, I'm on the wrong one.
Yes, you are.
Yes, I am, because that one, yes, did change. I was like, wait, no, one of these changed and one didn't, I was on the wrong one. Okay. EEA, changed. So, we have had an issue with buses having to make turnarounds in dangerous tight spots, including there was concern about the new neighborhoods that are being developed that are very narrow streets, with not a lot of space to maneuver, even with cars, and if there's even a single car parked on the side of the road, buses have difficulty getting down. Lots of parents drive their cars, bus stops when it's colder, even the mother. So, we needed to add some kind of reasonableness standard to it, that if it was unsafe for a bus to go down the street and turn around, because what happens in some cases is a bus gets into a tight place, has to make a three-point turn, there are kids coming that are running to the bus because they're late, or their parents parked, and there's snowbanks, and it just becomes a very dangerous and difficult situation for the bus drivers. So what we wanted to add was, required walking distances may exceed distances stated, so further than a quarter mile for primary kids and half mile for middle and high school, may exceed distances stated due to safety concerns, remote locations, or near proximity. So if they're, even if it's safe to turn around at the end of a street, if it's within 500 feet either way, we're not going to have the bus drive down there anymore. It's kind of just a reasonableness, really, is what, what we were calling it in the policy committee, is that if you're just a few feet over the quarter mile, we're still going to have the one bus stop, because buses are having a hard time getting to school on time, and it's more developments every day and not any more buses, so it's a safety issue.
I think all that makes perfect sense. What I, my comment or my, what I noticed in this was, I think we should spell out who makes that determination, because that, because what will happen is, we'll get into a situation, does the bus driver think it's unsafe? Is it Sue? Is it Joanne? Who makes that determination? And then, then the people know, outside of the organization, if this person has decided that we support that decision, that's their part of their professional judgment, and it's not a committee or an opinion, it's, you know what I mean? It's some, that authority should, should be stated where that lies, where the decision is. Then they don't like that, we can start another process, but...
So, is there a particular line there where you wanted to add that?
I had it in paragraph six, which was the turnaround part, and, or, so, to the proper way, no Scarborough, bus schools shall enter any public way that is determined to be unsafe. You might want to just say, determined to be unsafe by the Transportation Director, or by the Superintendent, or the designated, or something like that.
Well, further down, there's talk of the bus committee.
I saw that, but I also saw like, that, that, again, I was confused, is that a once, a year meeting that happens just to discuss general policy, or is that a situational type of committee that gets together?
It does both.
Right.
It does both.
So that committee would determine if, if a road is unsafe, not Sue Redman or Sarah, sorry about Sarah.
I think that's something that would come to the committee, to have either a ride along or look at the map or whatever.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, but maybe we should just state that up there too, or, or some other word that says, all decisions regarding safety are the responsibility of this committee, or, so, just so people, because when I read that, I'm like, well, who makes that determination that it's unsafe? Because you could have a situation where a parent might think it's perfectly safe, or the opposite. We may think it's safe, a parent might be complaining that it's unsafe, so they want the bus stop moved.
Well, further down, though, it does say that the program is under the direction of the Transportation Supervisor, who is responsible for the Superintendent, or the designated.
Which is different than the committee, though.
Correct.
I think Chris is just looking for a sense to be added just at the end of that yellow, that first yellow paragraph, so that it says, that's the second one, where it says, you know, does not provide adequate turnaround space, because sometimes people stop. Here's what I'm looking for. This is the point I'm stopping at, and they haven't bothered to read down to the end of that page where it tells you who's doing what, so that way it just clarifies that piece.
And determined by the safety committee.
Exactly. Actually, anytime you have a determination, I think it helps to call out who makes that determination. So if somebody reads it without knowing the process, will be able to read that in regular language? I'm just going to forward all my calls to your house, Jackie, it's no problem.
That'll be walking four miles.
Paragraph 7B, which really didn't change, but it's kind of a similar, yes, it says, when a student would be exposed to hazardous walking conditions defined as those that would place a child in a given age, a situation greater than normal or average, again, who would determine that? Is that the committee?
That's the committee again. So, that is, in this situation, for instance, it's the, not written policy, but the policy in the Transportation Department, that a road like Broad Turn Road, kids don't walk. If there could be three kids in a row living on Broad Turn Road, they stop at each driveway, because that is not a safe street for kids to be walking on, unless you're on Black Point, you know, Holmes Road, any of those that are double-yellow line, kind of, no shoulder, no sidewalk.
Again, that's, that's an interpretive thing, that's why I want, you know, we interpret it, or mean it a certain way, and I think it should, should really state that in the policy, as opposed to having an open ending where we may feel it's okay, or, or, again, an opposite situation come up, a parent might think it's an unsafe bus stop, for whatever reason, and then there's nothing in here that says, they could come and say, I want the bus stop changed because it's unsafe.
So should we just move up that safety panel to the top of the policy?
Yeah.
That's all it thing, is the first thing you read?
Yeah.
Or one of the first things?
And I do think that, that the initial determination should be made by the Transportation Coordinator, and, you know, when, and when there's, you know, conflict or confusion or uncertainty, it would be reviewed by the Safety Committee.
But that should, that should be written out and spelled out in the policy, so that when people read it for the first time, they know what needs to happen.
Yeah, if I have a problem, I'm going to call this person, and then if my problem persists, I'm calling this next person, and then they all have to...
It just ends up being the very last paragraph of the entire policy, and maybe just needs to be brought forward.
Got it.
This probably requires a second reading.
Yes. Have you heard the discussion on that one? I hope it's okay. All on paper.
First word, we...
Just first reading.
Six. EAR, Student Transportation again.
Okay, so that one was really just a review.
Is it EGAD first?
Well, EAR, which is the Student Transportation Services. It's just the very...
No changes to that?
No.
Okay. Any discussion?
EAR, yeah. I know nothing's changed, but again, the question I have is, are there any exceptions to Section 1.0? Because we spelled out the criteria that we will provide transportation, or the order of the criteria that we do provide it, but we also have the situation with two of the activities and two of the sports will be providing transportation to some practices that are off-campus. And I just want to know if that, if this policy is meant to interpret that that's not necessary? Because it's not, it's, it's not spelled out as one of these criteria?
Why wouldn't it be 1.2, transporting students to and from scheduled or approved athletic contest events and corporate activities?
Or not provided?
Well, no, I read that as meaning a, a game or a meet, or something like that. I didn't mean, I didn't read that to mean a regular practice schedule, that's how I interpreted it. And maybe I interpreted that wrong. If I did, then I believe it's no big deal, I don't know.
I think that's general enough, but...
I would, I would, on a personal note, I have always felt that when our students are involved, we should be providing the transportation. And, and as you know, I brought this forward when we talked about students having to get their own transportation to some practices. I don't approve of that. I don't think it's a safe environment for our students to be taking hours to school-sponsored activities, be they practice or, or games. And I will, I've been outvoted, and that's fine, but I just have to make that point. I don't care, the cost of a child's life is more important than saving money in the budget for something else, and I'd rather see the activity removed from the program than to have students driving themselves. I'm very, very committed to that philosophy.
Any other thoughts?
I just, I didn't want to start that debate, because it's a long one. I just, yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure this, it wasn't purposely left out, I'm not, I didn't interpret it properly, so it's, it's in there, it's not meant to be exclusive of that, that, so I'm happy and content. We will definitely save that discussion, Jackie, for another day.
Yes, we will.
Yes, we will, because it's likely to come up again.
If you say so.
Once you...
I know so.
Any other discussion on this item? All on paper. Six.
Is this a first-hand second?
Yes.
First-hand second.
Okay. EGA.
Copyright.
Copyright compliance. That is unchanged.
Next presentation, her first-hand second reading.
Okay.
Any discussion? See you then. All on paper. Six. ICA, School Calendar.
Okay, so all we changed on this, annually, the Board will adopt a school calendar which identifies student days, staff days, scheduled late start days, early release days, and school vacation. It just said reflective that there are late starts, so we just added late starts.
Move approval and present it to the... I'm okay with first-hand second reading, but I don't want to say that if somebody else has an issue with that.
I just, yeah, of course, just one thing.
Sure.
It, it does say it upfront, the Board will adopt. Oh, can you, you want a second?
We have a second.
I'll second, yeah, okay. The, just in the bottom, it's 3.0, it says, the Policy Committee will present the proposed calendar to the Board prior to the first Board meeting in April. In April, I would just say, present to the Board for approval, that's the only thing I would suggest, but it does kind of say we're going to adopt it on top, but, so it's not, they're not going to just come to the Board and say, here's our schedule, moving on. We still have to approve that schedule, correct?
Yes. Well, that's, that's what, that's what Big Point upset. Policy Committee will present the proposed calendars to the Board, it would be a first and second reading.
Before it has been presented to the Board.
Just one. Okay. Any other? Jackie?
I don't recall if it was in Policy and Doc, but at one point, there was, telling you about the school calendar being available to the faculty and staff before it was voted on by the Board.
It's always reviewed with the Association.
But that doesn't mean...
It's a meet and discuss, I don't know, the Association.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
So can this be a first and second, or is that a stand?
Second.
Okay. Okay.
All on paper. Six. You. IDR, Instructional Day Regulations.
Okay, so this, we just noted that there was a slight difference in the start and end time of high school than what it actually is, so we adjusted that. It doesn't change in real life, it was just catching up to what the calendar said. And then, 2.0, we removed, because that seems like a really weird place to put, we removed, the Board of Education provides kindergarten programs for Scarborough resident students who are five years old on or until the 15th of the school year. If I was a parent looking for, how old does my kid have to be to start school, I would not look under Instructional Day Regulations. So we thought it made more sense to move it to Policy JBC, which is, we'll get to that further down.
School additions.
Yeah. That's further down, so that would seem more, make more sense to take it out of here and move it to that one. Good point.
Motion for approval and...
Second. Hi, are we doing discussions? Well, first, is it going to be first and second, or I don't...
Is everyone comfortable on this? If we do first and second?
I think so. So, my motion would be a first and second.
Did someone second it?
Jackie? Yeah.
Very good. Further discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none? All in favor? Six. About dead. On G D D.
This was just a review.
No changes?
I had some, just a couple of questions, yeah, it looks like, oh, sorry.
Do we want, I, I move approval as presented, are we gonna do first and second with this as well, 'cause there's no, unless something happens.
I would just say first.
You go second.
I'll second it, it's first reading, not first and second.
All right, so for first reading amended, thank you. All right, so what's your question?
I have a second.
I'll say that, I'll say. You wanna go first?
I am.
You first, you s-
All right, my, my question was, I was under the impression that if somebody went to adult education, they were getting a G D D and not a Scarborough High School diploma. So I guess my question is, to receive the Scarborough High School diploma, what are the parameters? I mean, twenty-five and the showing up at adult education and getting the diploma like my daughter received last June, that said, it's a Scarborough High School diploma.
Yep, you can get it both, you can do both ways, they don't call it G D D anymore, they call it H I S A T.
Oh, that's just a command.
The name, but you can't get an academic Scarborough High School diploma through these pathways, or you can get a H I S A T, formally the G D D program, and then other pathways.
That's fine, thank you.
I, I had a question, 1.1 looked very, very similar to 2.0 to me, unless I'm reading that wrong as well. Like, it was just the same wording, just a little-
No, 2.0 is saying the Director of Adult Ed will establish regulations.
And then, one, but one says the Board of Directors of Adult Ed to establish such regulations consistently.
Oh, so you were saying 1.1 under 1.0?
Yeah, 1.1 sounds like very, the same thing as 2.0. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
Well, that's saying the Board is-
Well, this is saying the Board is telling the Director of Adult Ed to establish.
And then it says the-
So it keeps Board authority, school Board authority.
And then under two, it's the state requires.
It's kinda, it's kinda policy language.
Okay.
It's like the Board, the Board will, the Board will direct the, the Director of Adult Education, and then it restates again, then the Director of Adult Education will do it.
We'll do it.
Understate.
It's a, it's a bit of a redundancy, I'm sure, but-
No, I can see this is a complete copy from what Dr. Woodson required.
Well, I'm sure.
So, then the Director, though, is an employee of the, the ten, correct? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so, should I amend my original motion for first and second reading?
We'll make a second one.
I'm going to amend my original motion that was for a first reading only to be for a first and second reading on Policy I D D.
Second.
Thank you. And further discussion, seeing none? All in favor? Six. And finally, school admissions.
Okay. So that, we changed to add the kindergarten clause. School admissions that talks about legal age, residents, and, you know, who is resident, guardians are, so then we just added 4.0, Board of Education provides kindergarten programs for Scarborough residents. That's the only change.
Can I hear that motion again?
Move approval as presented for first reading.
Second. Thank you. Discussion, seeing none? All in favor? Six. Thank you. As you can see, Policy Committee has been very busy lately, so thank you very much for all you work and do in that area. All in favor of the workshop session? Going on?
We have established, and since Jen has been with us, we've been fortunate to have Jen with us, a, an update on I T, basically, we call it Cost and Benefit Analysis. Jen is really giving, again, a bit of a one-thousand-foot overview of the work that has been done to date, and is projecting and looking at the, the I T work that she has planned over the course of the next year, and we can't do that without including at least a status update on the proposal development for one-to-one at the high school. So I guess I would just warn everyone that this is all that is, it's not the presentation of a one-to-one proposal, it's a status update on where we are in the development of that proposal, and that is really just a subcomponent of the projections that, of the work to be done that Jen will talk of in terms of going forward.
So and that's a work in progress, we're still sort of growing organically as we go. Just to give you an overview of kind of where we were in 2014, 2015, oh, okay, 2014, 2015 obviously was consumed by Wentworth. We did do a lot of other things that I'll go into, particularly in terms of district-wide initiatives, but really Wentworth was sort of all consuming the whole staff. 2015, 2016, we're really gonna concentrate on moving things to the cloud, trying to move things off of our internal resources to sort of free up some resources there, take advantage of some of the free services that like Google Apps for Education has, and some, some other things. And then I'll give you a overview of kind of where we are to date with the high school one-to-one. So in 2014, 2015, obviously Wentworth, we went into planning sessions that extended far beyond this point at this time last year. We were at that point kind of discussing what we're gonna put in for infrastructure and for end-user equipment. When I say end-user equipment, I'm talking about both for the classroom equipment, for the staff, and for the students. Once we got done with that, we went into negotiating and purchasing, which was a little harder than I think everybody thought it was gonna be. But we did find some things that had needed some massage in the budget, so we did take care of that. We did the infrastructure build, meaning we did everything from cable it from the ground up, put in the projectors, we put in all of the interactive keynote boards, we literally built the carts as they came off the truck, I think we had about seventy of those. We received and configured all the end-user equipment, so we had one-to-one laptops, as you all know. We also had cover cams, which are those individual document cameras. We had printers, we had projectors, we had, you know, copier scanners, all kinds of stuff. So that was all received and configured. And then we actually moved into sort of the deployment phase, which entailed a lot of end-user training. And that end-user training, I never say, you know, has stopped, that's really an ongoing process. At the same time, we moved into troubleshooting and maintenance. I think we, we really, at that point, by the time we deployed, we were in pretty good shape, so we didn't really have a whole lot of troubleshooting that we had to do. It's more the training, it's the ongoing training all the time. Because if you think about a school of, you know, roughly eight hundred kids and staff, it's going in, training all the teachers, then going in and training every single student, so we have a really phenomenal group that goes out and does that. And that's ongoing, we'll be doing that every single year, just like at the middle school, if anybody here has middle school kids, we do have to go in every single year, we have meetings with the parents, we have to train the parents as well on sort of best practices, safety, security, and then we go into each classroom and train the, the kids. And we do refresher training with, you know, all the staff as well. At the same time, Wentworth, just as a reminder, Wentworth was moving into things that we had already covered with the rest of the district, like a new telecom system that had already launched, but we still had to train them on that. The new centralized printing solution, everybody else was already up and running on that, and we had to go in and train them on that. So it was, I have to give a lot of credit to Wentworth folks because they had a ton of stuff thrown at them, and they really used to handle it well. At the middle school, we continued on with M L T I, ongoing training sessions. We tried back in 2013, 2014, is that the right year? The H P Day. And we had H P, but we had some other vendors come in and actually conduct training sessions with the staff, and we kind of ran it like a conference, like you would have different tracks, and you could, ahead of time, sign up for different things. And so that worked really well because in terms of professional development, it really helped the teachers understand how to integrate the technology into the classroom curriculum. So we sort of tried something like that again this year, we did a half-day, but we did district-wide, and I think it worked out really well. We are planning to, we haven't done this yet, but we're looking into and sort of prepping to have a number of folks on the I T staff become H P technicians, certified technicians. So what that means is, we would have a number of people go through the H P training course, provided, free, at no charge. H P provides these courses where we can train folks to do sort of the smaller break-and-fix issues, not because it's really costing us anything at this point to send them out, because we did outfit these with warranties, but because it takes time, that we really can't have those devices out of the hands of the kids. So we're gonna go in and probably have three or four people trained as technicians, and then we'll be able to hopefully fix the breaks right onsite and have, turn them around in much quicker time. We did, now we're sort of moving into the lessons learned, which sort of focuses on the imaging process for the machines. So essentially, when I'm talking about imaging, we're talking about when you take a machine at the end of the year, we clean it, we completely wipe it of everything, and then we have to load that image back on. So you're loading, you know, your operating system, your operating software, all of that kind of stuff back onto the machine. Because we worked through a third party called E N A, there were some lessons that we had to learn about how to bundle that software together. And we had to work with some of the outside vendors that provided the software to help us create the Chrome MSIs, so to help us create these bundles to be able to remotely push them out. But, so we learned a lot of lessons that I think we can carry forward, not just with the middle school, but also with Wentworth, because now we have eight hundred machines there that we have to remotely push software out to. If we were to go forward with the high school, we would also be able to manage those devices centrally from the console that we purchased for WebRi. At the high school, we did, sort of in conjunction with the one-to-one research we were doing, we had a part of Chromebooks already for another purpose. So what we decided to do was, while those were not in use for this other purpose, we decided to deploy them out to a couple of different classrooms at the high school to actually have those teachers pilot the use of one-to-one devices. So not necessarily Chromebooks, that's, that's what we happened to have, but we just sort of wanted to see, how are they gonna use these devices, this technology, to integrate it into the curriculum in the classroom? Would it be useful, could not be useful? We invited feedback from them, we invited feedback from the students. So far, it's been an amazing test, we've gotten great feedback. We also put in a couple of interactive projectors, just sort of spot-tested them through the high school, folks that are particularly tech-savvy. Again, we've had really, really good feedback from them, and a couple of the, the folks who are piloting the Chromebooks are also piloting the interactive projectors, so it's sort of all working in conjunction together. We did go ahead and replace all of the wireless access points in the middle because they were even, we had huge dead spots, and, you know, we were sort of all consumed with both Wentworth and then prior to that, the middle school, and unfortunately, the high school sort of kept falling further and further behind. So anybody who has high school kids, who was ever at the high school, in the library, or the gym, or the auditorium, trying to get any kind of activity, you couldn't do it. So now we replaced the wireless A Ps, we've put in some sort of beefier wireless A Ps, but also we've put in more of them. So that infrastructure has been completely upgraded, mostly just because it hit end-of-life, but it would be ready for a one-to-one program if we were to move forward with it. We did also start a high school tech team, and this group is a group of teachers, they are representative of each area, discipline in the high school. They come together about once a month with folks from the I T team, and folks from Central Office, and from the high school admin. And we talk about tech issues, initiatives, tech problems, we talk about what they're piloting, they give us great feedback, we also collect feedback from the students, and that was really the group that we used primarily to do the one-to-one research, which I'll get to after all of this. So district-wide initiatives, you'll notice that Key Two does not have a slide of their own, but because we did go in and do some things in the Key Two buildings, but they were also initiatives that we did district-wide. So one of them, I hope y'all noticed the website, very excited about that, we have gotten great feedback from the public about that, I think it's much easier to navigate. We are still in the process, although we, we're about ninety-five percent there, of going out and training folks in each department and each phase level to update their own pages. So we'll, we'll get there as soon as, it's really now kind of when they have time to be with us, but then we train them. And the feedback that I've gotten from folks in the field is that the Google interface is actually very easy to use. So I think as they learn, they're starting to update their own information, their pages. Just to put your minds at ease, we do have sort of very consistent rules and parameters that they have to follow, so just because you have access to update pages, and then you can go, you know, crazy and kind of post wherever you want. We do spot-check it frequently. But the, from the end-user perspective, we have gotten great feedback that it's much easier than now, people like the user interface, they find, they're able to find the information they need much quicker. We are continuing, we started last year with cloud adoption, and like I said, that's really trying to move a lot of the strain that's on our internal resources, bunk, into the, the cloud, meaning Google, but a couple of other applications. So Google is what we have really focused on in this past year. We have a couple of internal drives, and we have set a deadline date in February that all staff must have all of the information located in their G drive moved into Google. We've had training sessions, we've had, you know, refresher courses, we have online videos, we have folks who go out to the field and just do one-on-one training, and people are having a bit of time. But for the most part, what we've heard is, it's very easy to use, you would love it because you have access to it. That's it. I, as most of you know, used to be an information security officer for a financial institution, and I happen to be very paranoid about information security. So we did look into for confidential documents, so meaning documents that would store a social security number, health records, you know, any kind of student information that would not generally be public information. We did decide to go with a solution called Huddle, and I think I've told you about Huddle in the past, but Huddle is basically a confidential, a confidential Google. It's, it's an online, cloud-based storage and collaboration source, and essentially it encrypts all the data, so it'll encrypt it in rest, it'll encrypt it in transit, so we can kind of all, you know, sleep easier at night knowing that it's, it's stored safely. That, we are rolling out now. So Google is kind of ninety-five percent there, and Huddle is probably about thirty percent there. What I hope is, by the time we start the next school year, we will be completely free of all internal drives. So everything that would be stored, really all confidential documents, will actually be stored in these two sort of containers. Online testing deployment, we're being forced to go in that direction. We are meeting with sort of our cohorts from other school districts to, you know, compare notes and make sure that we're all prepared in terms of bandwidth, in terms of hardware requirements, and basically in terms of training for kids, and sure, we have to fill in more on that. So we have done some testing in different schools to make sure that we can handle the load, I'm pretty confident that we can, time will tell. Centralized printing and cloud integration, this is something that we talked about before, but, and there was some resistance initially, I think- But, and there was some resistance initially, I think now the staff is really starting to form up to it. For one big reason, which is moving away from an individual printer on everybody's desk, okay? We all know how much that costs in terms of ink and repairs and replacements. So we really wanted to, basically for cost savings and kind of productivity efficiencies, we moved to a centralized print solution. And that was PaperCut, which everybody makes fun of the name, but the PaperCut solution, instead of when you send a print job, instead of sending it like you would traditionally from your desktop to a specific printer, and then having to figure out which printer it was, because if you're in a building like, you know, the middle school, you might have 15 different printers, and nobody even knows which one's coded what. You just send it to print, it sits on a server. And at this point in time, you can go anywhere in the district and pull that print job. So if you are from Wentworth, I can't say the middle school, because the middle school is sort of its home beast. But we are, we're working on that, just because it's on its own network, because of M L T I. If you're at Wentworth, and you're in a meeting at central office, or you're in a meeting, let's say you're in a meeting at the high school, you can send something to print and pick it up at the high school. You don't have to know what printer you're sending it to or anything like that. So we are finding staff likes that, because if you go to the printer that's closest to you and it's busy, you can walk to the next printer down the hall and pick it up. There's paper jam there, you can go someplace else and get it. One of the things, though, obviously, we're trying to get people not to print things. So one of the things that we are working on and we are piloting right now is a scan to their Google Drive option. This is, it's called the iOption, and we're piloting it at the middle school and at the high school. From what I understand, the middle school folks actually really like it a lot, because you can take documents, let's say you get something in the mail and you want to scan it in, or you have some kind of lesson plan and you want to scan it in. You can scan it in directly to your Google Drive, and then from there, you can share it out for collaboration. So hopefully, this could be something that we can deploy district-wide, but we're still piloting it. I think in the end, it's gonna provide a lot of cost savings for the schools. We did configure, this is where in the K2s, we really think they were happy, we configured every projector in the district to be wireless. So no more having to plug in to your H D M I cable anymore. You can come in as long as you've been configured to connect to the system, you can come in, connect to it, and then it's given the teachers a lot of mobility within the classroom, because if you have a tablet, or you have even your laptop, and you want to kind of walk around and, you know, see what your students are doing. We've heard from people that that's given, that that mobility has given them a lot of flexibility in the classroom. We are also working on social media, and there's been a lot of questions, not just on the school side, but on the town side as well, about social media, you know, when a Facebook page went to have Dr. Heck whistle tweet things out. So we're, we're working on a policy, because we really, I think we have the moans of the policy, but we need to make sure that all of those procedural things are kind of in place, and then we'll start kind of working on how, how this is gonna roll out. A lot of teachers have also requested that they have websites, individual teacher websites, a lot of them already do. So we're trying to work with them to actually make them consistent. And my, one of my main concerns as a parent was, all these teachers that had different websites, great, because I could go right to their website, see what the curriculum was, and see what to do next, and see where the reading material was. But I kind of wanted something, just one page upfront, that was the same for everybody. So as I hit each teacher's page, I would know exactly where to look for what. What they did beyond that is totally up to them. So we are working with them in Google Sites to create that existing splash page, and then working with them, if they have sites, to connect their existing sites to the backend of that. Questions about any of that? Actually, at Google's Apps for Education, I think it's five terabytes now. So it's, you know, I mean, you could almost say that's unlimited. Yeah, this year, Google Apps for Education expanded the amount of memory that people have. So it's actually better for us, because what was happening was, you would see, you know, a visual of the drive, and it would start to redline, the higher you got, the fuller it got. And so people, you know, started to see all over the district, all over town, really, started to see these sort of redlines, because things were filling up.
So it's not, it's not a major cost, though, it's a, I mean, there isn't a significant investment required to ship it up to the cloud?
There's virtually no investment to ship everything up to the cloud, and it's actually going to be a cost reduction on the backend, because we're gonna be able to put to purpose a lot of this. As the servers age out and end of life, we'll just actually retire them. And the ones that still have some life left in them, we'll virtualize them and redeploy them for other projects that are coming up, so we don't have to purchase new servers. Huddle, the caveat to that is, Huddle, which is the confidential source, there is, there is a cost to that, yeah.
Just one more, at the high school, if you go to a one-to-one, are you gonna allow the, the accessibility to the wireless projectors with the student devices as well?
Don't know yet, that's something that we have to kind of work on and consider. We've been thinking about that, like at the middle school, we've been sort of pondering that too. There are ways to control access keys, so they can't just randomly, you know, decide that they're gonna put a picture of, you know, Lucky or Pet up there, or something like that.
I think more at the high school level, if you've got, okay, you've done this project, leave it up, and let's see, let's take a look at it, and you don't have to... Yeah.
Not here. Yeah. And there are ways to have, like, rotating keys, and then you get the key, and they can, but they usually have to have a client on their machine. So it's a matter of us imaging with the client or being able to push it out, and that's kind of where we're at now.
You mentioned the amount of training that is ongoing. How many, how many IT staff do we have?
Well, we have seven people right now, but don't forget that we're a shared services department. So we service both the town and the school. So we've got folks who, most of my, my folks are really multi-purpose folks. They're, they're cross-trained to pretty much do everything. We have about three people that dedicate a lot of their time to the school system, and are trained as trainers. But then, within the school system, we have tech integrators, we have ed techs, we have different folks within each phase level that are working directly with their folks' training too. And then we also have provided a lot of online training. I have to give Alicia sorts of days a lot of credit, because she's been really focused at creating these, you know, online PowerPoint presentations, and she's got a couple of other applications she uses. And it's a great way for people to take the training when they have time. So, you know, maybe they have time at lunch, or between classes or something, and they're quick 15-minute, you know, kind of lunch and work kind of things.
So I guess this is more of a question for George. The tech integrators are part of the school-based staff, as far as their salary is concerned, or part of the technical department?
They're school-based.
School-based.
Base-based.
Base-based.
Just a question, and this is more for you, George, but I'm trying to, trying to, what part of the, the, the PLTs, are there any kind of cross-training things going on within the PLT groups that are tying into this feedback loop for the apps that are using, or these tech talks, and how can you maybe just touch a little bit about how that's working, or is there a structure in place for that? You know, I mean, like you were saying, there's a tech team in high school that meets once a month, but are there PLTs that are interacting across the whole project phase for their PLTs, or?
And Jen, and actually Joanne may wish to add to this. We have, when Jen was saying that some of the videos allow teachers to access the training when they're ready, or when it's more proximate to their use, and that's basically when people learn the best, is when they really need to use something. And I think the PLTs have been a great vehicle for teachers to work together in a comfortable, sort of safe environment, to spend time with teams that are ready to move in some certain direction around an application of technology. And we do see that, I mean, it's not all teams, but there is a, there's a, and as well, that also works for other instructional coaches, for example, literacy specialists. When I'm out and about, when Mika's out and about, Joanne, and we're visiting with the, with the PLTs on those late starts, inevitably, I am seeing a math coach working with this PLT, I'm seeing a literacy coach working with this PLT. And not that there's a lot, many of them, but inevitably, those coaches during PLT time are completely deployed, including the IT coaches as well.
So some of those PLTs are actively acting as a training platform for implementing the systems or the processes that are, that are being held up. And that's obviously not happening at the high school, correct? Because of the, or is that happening, which is not as to an extent as it might be in the middle school?
The teachers have laptops. It's just that they don't, they're not living and working in an environment that is, that is really necessarily in need of technology integration, because the students don't have access to the technology.
Right.
So the answer to your question is, no, you don't see that, because the need is, is not there, because the capacity is not there in terms of students.
We have had groups at the high school working on, like, Google Docs a while ago. And, you know, online collaboration, we're doing Google Docs and things. But then, at the end, they said, okay, this is great, and now we need devices to actually, you know, be able to work on this. And the kids, you know, it's one thing if you can kind of herd them all down the hall and sit in a lab and work on something for an hour, and then, oh, your hour's up and you gotta go. But then, at night, when they have to finish the paper that they started working on with the four other kids in their class, and they're supposed to be in Google Docs trying to collaborate, there's no way for them to do it. So I think they sort of hit a brick wall. They found some really cool tools that they could use online, but then at the end, they didn't think it was happening.
And I'm, I'm just trying to tie that, another one-to-one discussion point into that, to say, you know, there are things that are happening to the benefit of that technological...
Right now, the high school has four desktop labs, they have a couple of carts of laptops and netbooks. But the feedback that I started receiving day one, when I started working here, was, a lot of clients about, we can't get the time, we can't get a hold of the carts, you know, they're trying to share a very limited number of devices amongst a lot of staff and students. And we have, as we just discussed, we've moved to Google. And so everything, grades three through eight now, is, everything is moving more online, moving to the cloud, moving towards collaboration. And so when you are used to sort of collaborating, particularly since the middle school has been doing this for a long time now, you're used to collaborating six through eight, and then you get to the high school, and you have no device, that's a problem for you. Because now you have to learn an entirely new way to do your homework and your classroom projects. So just to kind of give you an overview of the process so far. We do have a planning team that's been assembled, and that team consists of folks from the high school, representatives for each department, admin from the high school, folks from central office, folks from my staff. We do have the high school tech team, we talked about that, we meet once a month, and we talk about different tech issues, and they are piloting some of this equipment. We did go through and conduct requirements definition sessions, and this was something that we really wanted to do with the teachers. So we talked to the tech team, and then we went into the I L T meeting, the central leaders team, and we talked to them about, take what the, whatever idea you have of this specific device. So don't think about a tablet, don't think about a laptop, don't think about a desktop, but what is it that you need, what are the basic requirements that you need to teach in your classroom? So we talked about everything from, you know, I need, it was, it was kind of interesting, because we started off talking about keyboards, and about keyboarding, keyboarding skills, and, and, well, kind of, well, it's really hard on the iPad to have to take up half the screen with a keyboard, and, you know, and then they thought, well, no, we want tablets, a lot of them came in kind of with this idea they want tablets. And then we started talking about the keyboard need. It became really clear that they needed an integrated keyboard. They want their students to have a keyboard and have a full screen. So we talked about a lot of things like that, each session probably lasted an hour, an hour and a half. And then we have done department shares, which, one of those happened, that date that I talked about, where we had sort of a district-wide share about different things people are using with technology. But at the high school in particular, we had the folks who are piloting the Chromebooks and the interactive projectors, actually invite people, rotate people through, to show, show and tell, basically, show them what they've been doing with the technology so far. And we are planning to, we have not yet to do this, but we're planning to gather the students and the staff together. Particularly, we're gonna focus on students and staff who have used one-to-one in the past. So we have a number of students that moved here from different districts, and the same thing with staff. We're gonna gather them and say, how is it different? What are you missing? So from the requirements definition session that we talked about, these were some of the basic requirements that they said they must have. Keyboard, there's, they had lists of specialty software, so for example, in the science department, they use ProWare. ProWare is a, it's sort of an analysis, right, analysis software. There's, there's special peripherals that they have to plug into the machine to be able to collect data, and then the software itself actually, I think, helps them analyze the data. And then, and so each department kind of has things like that, which we already own. They wanted to be able to record audio and video, more and more, they're going online. And they are Skyping the classrooms around the world, they're sharing the information, they're collaborating with, you know, other classrooms. Particularly, I don't know if any of your kids were involved in the iBook project, but that was something where they collaborated with classrooms basically all over the world, as this book kind of traveled along, and they shared data. They wanted at least two USB ports, because at any given time, you might need a mouse, you might need these peripherals in science, or something, you know, anything. Built-in webcams, H D M I ports, in case you do need to connect out to a projector. Headphone jacks, because some of the testing that takes place, you actually have to have headphones. They did want to be able to save to a hard drive. I think really where that was going was they wanted to be able to save work somewhere. A seven-hour battery life minimum, so that there wasn't gonna be a lot of having to plug in, swap out batteries during the day. Multimedia card reader, they did want sleeves, Kate, some kind of, they didn't want like big backpacks or big bags that the kids were gonna have to carry in addition to their backpacks. They wanted sort of sleeves that they could stick this in and then kind of put it in their bag. They wanted to be secure, ability, they did want the ability to charge during the day. So what that looks like, you know, is just sort of optional, but they wanted some place or some way to recharge if they had to. Then there were some nice to have, one of them was stylus. So if they, one of the things in particular that they talked about was the ability to sort of annotate papers, or annotate other documents that kids would find online, but they wanted to be able to do that via handwriting. And then Skype and Google Hangouts. So these were just sort of the basic requirements, there was a really long list, and kind of boiled them down to the basics here. So what we did was we took those requirements, and we went out to all of our nearest vendors, and we matched up specific devices to those requirements. And this is kind of a list of, you know, what we came up with. As you can see, it's relatively close. I based this primarily on about 1,300 different devices. And what I did was extrapolate that out over six years. Because to me, it's not just the initial cost that you have to consider, but you have to consider the cyclical replacement, and what it's gonna cost to maintain. I threw in everything, I do have much more detailed sheets that we'll share with you later for the proposal. But we took into consideration everything, from, you know, extra power adapters, to the cases, to the chargers, to, you know, everything, everything you would need. So what this looks like, you can see sort of the annualized cost, and I'll just kind of go through each option, because they're a little different from each other. Again, we took the requirements, and this is kind of how, this is a more visual look. Again, we took the requirements, and this is kind of how, this is a more visual look at which devices need which requirements. The HP 210G1, I had some of these devices in the car that I wanted to share with you. But when we actually made the proposal, we didn't bring those in. The, the 210G1 is an eleven-point-six-inch screen. So, one of the things that the teachers really said was the problem was the portability of the device. They didn't want the knees, you know, that weighs like fourteen pounds. They wanted something that was lighter, that would be more portable, that the kids could easily carry class to class, or if they had to go out into the field and hear the project out there, they could, they could handle it out there. So, we looked at some smaller, they're, they're full-fledged laptops, but they're kind of netbook size.
So, I'm just curious, if you can slide or run me through all these, which one of these, if any, are like the middle school devices? The HP 210G1, the 440s?
Obviously, through HP, we do get discounted pricing because we go through them for MLTI. So, we did kind of take a look at what they had to, to offer. The thing about the HP 210G1, it is the only one on this list that has touchscreen. And touchscreen was one of the key functionalities that the teachers decided they really needed. I actually included that in the requirements, but you can see, you know, four gigs of RAM. Most of these devices have plenty of RAM, plenty of hard drive space, an I3 or higher processor. This one has 81 Pro, or we can downgrade it to seven if people aren't ready to go to Windows 8. So, I don't know, are you guys familiar with the difference? Okay.
Aren't they coming out with 10?
They are, yeah.
Which is going to take care of a lot of the problems that people have had in trying to ship them.
Yeah, so, Windows 8 is tile-based, because Windows 8 was built for touchscreens. So, if you think about the way an iPad looks, or, you know, other tablets, it's that touchscreen capability. Windows 8 was built specifically for that. It does not have the snazzy little like start Windows button at the bottom that everybody's used to. So, you can click on that, your file structure pops up, and it doesn't have that. And so, people, users are really frustrated with it. There are clamshells that you can download that provide the Windows 7 feel, but then you're kind of like, well, why do we even do this? They just get Windows 7. So, yes, they are talking about Windows 10, and they're talking about sort of, a lot of people be drooling over 8, and just going directly to 10 because they're for billion.
What's the rest of the district in the town, in southern?
Seven, yeah. So, that's just sort of something to think about, because while it does meet all the requirements, we could roll it back to seven. And one of the things that we talked about was, maybe we do go with a touchscreen, because if you think long-term, if we're thinking of cycles of, you know, five and six years, there is going to be a point where we're going to go touchscreen. I mean, it's just going to be, that's the way everything's going. So, do we want to just have the device and be prepared and upgrade the OS when it comes out and it's ready and people are used to it before they're kind of demanding it? Just something to think about. The Chromebook 440 is what we have at the middle school and Wentworth. So, the nice thing about this device, although it's a full fourteen-inch screen, it's a little heavier than the other devices, it's what the kids are used to. So, they are going to be very familiar with this device, they'll have to use this from grade three through eight, and when they move to the high school, it's not going to be a big shock to them. Fourteen-inch screen, like I said, sort of the same thing, it has a Win-7 OS. It is almost five pounds, so that's something to consider. I say four-point-six there, but when you start adding on all the other, you know, points to it, it's probably about five to five-and-a-half pounds. They say nine-hour battery life. I don't really think that's a nine-hour battery life. If it's nine-hour battery life, maybe if you just have the lid closed and you're kind of carrying it around with you the whole time, if you're actually using it, I would say you probably are going to get about five to six hours, maybe. Which, is that about what you're seeing, Robert, yeah? Lenovo ThinkPad 11E20E9 is kind of the same thing as the HP 210G1, except it does not have a touchscreen. But it is a smaller version, it's an eleven-inch screen. It's a little bit heavier than the HP 210, but it has pretty much all the same thing. Win-7 OS, because it's not touchscreen, they do guarantee a six-and-a-half-hour runtime battery. They are coming out with different lithium-ion batteries too, that promise much longer lives. I mean, I don't know, I can't guarantee it, but maybe. And then we have the Samsung Series 3 Chromebook. They're kind of back and loaded this, because you all know what Chromebook looks like, right? They're small, they're thin, they're very portable. But the thing about Chromebooks is, they're made to connect directly to your Google Drive. So, there's really no hard drive storage capacity at all. This one happens to have a sixteen-gig hard drive, which is, you know, what's on your phone, basically. So, it could maybe store, upload it or something. But it's not going to store software, documents, data, Excel spreadsheets, or whatever. So, in talking to the teachers and going through these two mandatory requirement definition sessions, what we found is they really do need access to the software, for now, anyway. So, what we talked about is creating a virtual desktop interface on the backend. And essentially, what that would be is if you took your Chromebook and you simply browsed into a desktop, like what you would see on a regular laptop. We can then, on the backend, load that desktop with any of the specialized software they need. It would look like a regular desktop, it would have Microsoft Office, it would have all the tools and software that they need. We priced this out at two-hundred-and-fifty concurrent seats on the virtual desktop interface, which I think will more than suffice. We did go out and visit Wyndham, Wyndham has a VDI solution. We did watch this used in conjunction with a Chromebook, and we watched it used in conjunction with a full-fledged laptop, and both seemed to connect seamlessly. There was very little, if any, latency. It connected right to a desktop, they had, you can set up your user profiles. So, while Chris might see one set of software, Dr. Lewis might see a completely different, whatever's in his profile, he'll see, whatever's in your profile, he'll see. So, we can set that up. There is a significant initial cost to purchasing and configuring the VDI, but the long-term maintenance is much less, because the Chromebooks are much less. So, it's sort of, you know, there's a lot to kind of consider here. So, we're still kind of going through the proposal, we're still talking to people. David has actually arranged a group of students and teachers, we'll be talking to them and getting some ideas, and then we'll be coming back to you. I just wanted to let you guys know that, because I know you're probably getting a ton of questions from the community too, about what's going on, where are you guys?
One of the things I would like to see is, is I see the hardware cost here. I'd like to see the overall value across the system, whether it's adding the additional two-hundred and fifty seats, or if there's other maintenance issues, let's say, to have two different types of licenses. So, the hardware costs obviously are a big chunk of that, but if we're going to end up having cost differential somewhere else, like we now need a separate tech to run the Samsung Chromebook versus the 440s that we already have, and there's a different training structure associated. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, it's just, I'd like to see that overall investment cost, not just the hardware side. Or is that reflected in there?
That is, yeah, and I'll just show you, just to give you an idea, I didn't print these out for everybody because we're actually still working on them. But the way that I came up with those costs is, we did different worksheets where, so for example, this is, I included all of the line items that we could possibly need. I think we have everything in here. I say that, and that probably students may be forgetting something. But then we took a look, so on the backside of the sheet, we took a look at the sort of revenue and expenditures that we would get from the maintenance program. So, obviously, we would have a maintenance program, parents would rethink, I mean, this would be part of the proposal, pay something into it, just like they do at the middle school. And so, that fund would take care of some of the gaps that we have. I also have, again, extrapolated out the replacement numbers and just given you sort of a visual of the number, because at any given time, if we do this in overlapping cycles, there will be a number of devices that are not covered at all by warranty. But I do think since we've backloaded those into years four, five, and six, I think that we can take care of that out of the maintenance fund. And I think, once we get HP certified, and if we decide to go with one of the other options, we can also, most of these companies have certifications, we can do some of the repairs ourselves. So, again, I didn't print these out for everybody, because they're not, they're not complete, and we're still working on some of the numbers. But it does, those numbers are fairly comprehensive.
Any questions, Jessica? I just want to give you, I see you're for, in three of them, you're having six inches versus the forty inch. I think, because of the, kind of, the effect of his eyes, you know, how difficult it's going to work, you know, looking at it, because I have a desk, and it's very small, I have to magnify it.
Yeah.
So, it puts spring on his eyes, and, you know, you're the friend of it, it's a forty inch is much better compared to the C46. You don't say that, I'm sure you're going to prefer that one. So, you know, I simply have three to eight, you know, this is difficult, I have a sensorator to every piece of that hardware. So, for a high schooler, if it's forty inch, it's not really going to be heavy, you know, if it's more, pretty easy, you know, I guess, you know, it's, it's, you know, they, they use something like that.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm thinking about the forty inch. I feel like it's, this is such a big project, it costs, so we're very careful to select the right equipment. Basically, this is going to be this tool, which kids are going to have to use all the time. It's going to be great, you know, they can go to study halls, get the homework finished. It's, I think it's so important for this high school to be more efficient and more able to study. We think it's comfortable, but it really has to be something, do something that's, it's going to be light to use. Really, I think come to high school, it's going to get kind of, some kids have a laptop, and, you know, this school-ish one. And you have Google Cloud, people can still, you know, are we going to have policies, nobody bringing anything except a school laptop? If it's not something that they prefer to use or feel like comfortable using, it's going to simply be, it's just more to.
That we'll kind of discuss, and we're still kind of working out the details. And a big part of what the students would prefer to work on will be discussed when David has his focus groups with the students in the school. Now, that said, like I said, we are piloting some of the Chromebooks in different classes, and the feedback has been mixed. There have been a couple of kids who have said, these are really small keyboards and small screens, but a lot of them say, they like, just, it's light, they like being able to pick it up, like, you know, a book or a newspaper and kind of walk out with it. So, I think, I think it's really going to be dependent upon going back to the students and talking to them. And, you know, again, talking to the teachers, we did talk to a number of other school districts. We will, we hope to be going out to other school districts too, who have implemented one-to-one with a variety of different devices, and talking to them about, you know, do you regret anything? Do you wish that you had gotten bigger, or smaller, or lighter, or, you know, beefier machines? So, we'll be looking at all of that.
And for, for these choices, are they having comparable processor ability and accessibility? So, you can, you know, actually compare the speed?
Yeah, if you, if you take a look at the breakouts, or, yeah, you can see, most of them have I3 processors. There's one that's Salyron, which Salyron actually has improved over time.
Will you be comfortable after the process of setting, kind of, ranking these four choices in order of preference? Not just based on a financial standpoint, but based on a combination of user ability, maintenance, interface, all of this stuff? I think that might be helpful, it certainly would be helpful for me to know what your preference would be.
Yeah.
I mean, costs obviously are important, but if there's other factors in the, that's not going to be important, that's not true, so.
Yeah, we definitely will be doing that after we go out. I think we have more research, more field work to do. This is really just a, you know, we have a ten-mile run, we're kind of at the quarter, you know, quarter race point here. I just, I know we have questions from the community, and I have them, I know other folks in central office have. So, I just wanted to give you something to let you know that we are working on it, and we have done research, and we have sort of narrowed it down to a number of devices, but we still have work to do.
Jessica?
Yeah, I just, did I read that Lenovo is an IBM product?
Yeah.
They're licensed.
Yeah.
They're a licensee. Sorry, maybe this isn't the right time, but maybe you can address some of the other questions we've had, like the bring-your-own-device types of things, just kind of, will Big Service provide for meaning towards this approach? Or the draw computer thing or something, what the shortcomings would be of a product like that? That's kind of driving us in this direction.
Sure.
Regret, you don't want to.
Yeah, no, BYOD, so BYOD is bring-your-own-device. And we essentially have that now, because we do have public net, and, you know, students are coming in with these all the time. There's a couple of issues with BYOD, and I did a lot of research last spring, I attended a couple of conferences, and did have an opportunity to talk to a number of schools that had attempted to implement BYOD. BYOD means different things to different people too, so let me just throw that out there. There are some schools that call their program BYOD, but it's really a virtual desktop interface. So, yes, you can bring in your own device, but on the backend, everybody's connecting to the same thing. Okay, there are other BYOD programs where they say, BYOD, here are the three devices that you can bring in, because we have to be able to connect to your operating system and your version of your browser and your, you know, your device, whatever it is. Then there's just the wide-open BYOD, which I think has not gone well for schools. Because if you ask, if we were to go out, it might be an interesting exercise for us to do, go out and survey all of the high school students, do you have a device? I would say probably most of them are going to say yes, and most of them have this device. But writing a term paper on an iPhone is probably not an option for most of them. So, we would have to really specify, when we say device, here's what we mean. This, so the school district I talked to, there was one, I think that they were, you know, we'll be on that, and they decided that they were going to have a BYOD program. So, they said, BYOD, open for business. And so, year one, everybody brought in everything you can imagine. And they said they spent the first ten or fifteen minutes of every single class deploying IT people trying to get three or four students connected, right? So, this class can't start until everybody's connected. Inevitably, there would be students that you just could never connect, because they bring in some kind of device that has an Android old operating system, or somebody brings in their dad's old computer that, you know, is kind of that thick, or, you know, maybe it's a desktop, but they're just dragging it and plugging it in. So, that was a disaster. So, partway through the year, they said, we can't do this. The IT department revolted and said, we've got to stop this. So, they said, well, what do you want to do? And we said, well, we have to limit the number of devices. So, they chose three devices next year. And they said, good news, parents, we have, we're going to give you a choice of three devices, pick one of these and bring them in. And the parents said, no, because you told us BYOD last year, we bought a device. We're not going to go buy another new device, so make it work. So, the school ended up buying the devices and basically saying, well, we'll buy the devices, and then you have to pay us, you know, and so on and on. People said, no, we can't do that. And they ended up basically just giving the certificates when the kids graduated. So, it didn't work very well, and the woman that I talked to from that school district said, we would not recommend that approach, just because it's too hard to fully commit, particularly if you have thirteen hundred students, to fully commit that you are absolutely one-hundred percent guaranteed going to be able to connect them to your system, no matter what the device, no matter what the operating system, no matter what the version. It just, it can't be done. You're setting yourself up.
I just wonder, why, why, you know, when you run a software, you always have a system requirement. Why can't we set up a system requirement to say, you know, what's, you have to run Windows, you know, seven and above, or sixes, or whatever it is, or iOS, you know, six or eight, whatever, you know, for Apple. So, give a system requirement, you know, you know. So give a system requirement, you know, you know, then everything we know, when they come, those kind of equipment we're capable of accessing, that we're capable of, you know, download these and programs. We, for, for example, you know, I3, as you say, is not very fast, you know, whether I5, I7. So I would guess if I7 says, you know, what, I have to use I3 for this quick.
Well, I mean, part of it, so I forget that there's roughly 14, 15% free and reduced rate in Scarborough, right? You take that number and then I always add on an extra 5%, because, just because there's 14% that are free and reduced, there's probably another 5% that are kind of right on the line that can't afford to go out and buy a $500 piece of equipment. So now you've got 20% of your school population who can't afford a device. So we're saying to them, too bad, you have to.
Well, then, you know, for the rest, we're willing to buy new devices with a real, reasonable system requirement. And the ones that cannot do it, you know, we don't ask, you know, 30, 30%. But that's still a huge saving for this year, if we can make that system work. You know, if, or you have to everybody connect to, you know, Google Drive, or Google Drive, whatever it is.
The problem, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, but the problem is really going to be the reality of trying to connect 1,300 people every day, all day long. And you can say to them, here's your system requirement, and I'm telling you, right off the bat, you're going to get 25% of people coming in that don't have system requirement, but have something close to it, so they think it'll be okay. Well, it's not Windows 7, it's Windows 8, but won't everything work on Windows 8? Because if it's Windows 8, it's the next version up from Windows 7, is it everything compatible? No, it's not. So, you know, right off the bat, I think we're just going to have people who are going to say, well, it's close enough, let's just wing it and see if it works. And it's not going to work, and what you're going to run into is a problem in the classrooms where teachers are not able to actually start their, their classes.
And if I can just pass something out to you, because this point has been concerned about the fact that our high school kids don't have computers. And in the fall, we were very concerned when we met with Cumberland County up at the convention, seeing what we thought was, wow, are we the only ones? So I decided to call the state yesterday and find out exactly what's going on across the state as well as in Cumberland County. So what I've got here for you is an opportunity for you to see what the data looks like for Cumberland County, or what's going on in the high schools and middle schools in this entire county for MLTI. And what you're going to see is that every single high school, with the exception of Scarborough and, and it was one other and Brunswick High School, all the other high schools have one-to-one computing through MLTI for their school system. Five years ago, 23,700 main high school students had a one-to-one computer, and none of them were in our high school. That blows my mind. Five years ago.
Totally agree with you. Right now, you know, the student really need, really need to have access to laptops, which is portable devices they can work with, because that would, you know, improve the chance to learn a lot of things during homework.
That's right, and that's the important piece here, is not, the computer is just the tool. The value here is marrying that content and that curriculum to the computer, to the use of the computer as the tool. It's what is it that changes in that classroom, in that subject, that is all of what this is about? That's all about what this is about. It's just a tool, it expands understanding, it's much richer, it's much deeper, it offers layers and layers of knowledge that we can't provide. Our district has programs, already has the technology piece to it, our high school kids can't use it. We bought the programs already.
And that's actually an important part of what we're talking about with BYOD, because we do have the programs, we already have the applications, we have the software. If people are bringing their own devices, we can't load that software to their machines. We would still have to have some kind of virtual desktop environment on the backend. And that virtual desktop environment, like I said, is a significant cost upfront to implement. So at that point, you're halfway there towards having a consistent device that you offer and knowing for sure that every single child is going to have a device.
Do you know what the state requirements are for the computer-based testing? Because if we're on a bring-your-own-device, how are we going to ensure that everybody can get on to the state website or however they're executing those exams or administering those exams? Is that?
Yeah, we, we've already made sure that the, the basic requirements are met. So with the ProBook 440s.
I know we will, understand that if you do a BYOD type of arrangement, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee they can even access that system to have that test and administer.
Right, exactly. I mean, if we were to have some kind of BYOD like that, we would still probably have to have computer labs, we'd still have to, like, for, you know, the science department, they need that room where they need the clients loaded to be able to connect the virtual devices. You would still have to have carts of laptops there, you know, it's kind of almost defeats the purpose.
Has to mean the base, or what kind of system, what kind of base can I have? Is it remote kind base, or is it just, you know, you can access anywhere? For the state testing, I was, Chris was talking about, that's, I was just wondering.
The state testing is browser-based, but you have to go in through a secure portal. So you do have to have a client loaded to the device, is what we understand now. We're still learning about it, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get the cut.
Do you want to keep that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So now we're going into 70, oh, do I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRHS 4056K for the purpose of addressing a personal matter not to return to public session.
Actually, because we flipped him, you will be returning to public session, but only for the purpose of moving into your second executive session. That's what you have to do in terms of coming public, that you'll go immediately into your second executive session, at which point you will not be returning to public session.
Second on paper, six, Mary Jane.